And with that, I will turn it over to staff for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items number 25 and 26 have been withdrawn. Item number 24, the Owen Valley wastewater treatment site plan. Item 29, the Owen Valley concept plan. And item 35, the construction consulting of Tennessee plat. All three are on your consent agenda for deferrals. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I got you. All right, thank you, Erin. We do have one signed up for the public comment phase. Was that your intent, is to sign up Ms. Hester?
No, no, it, it, I'll deal with it.
Okay.
It's inconsequential.
Thank you.
If I understand correctly.
Okay, thank you. So with that, no public comments, we'll move on to consideration of the minutes from the last meeting. Any comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to consideration of the consent agenda, is there anybody that needs to recuse himself? Hearing none, and we'll take it as a whole. Any, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, moving on. Motion passes. Moving on to first item of business is under old business. Item 24 was just on consent. Item 25 and 26 have been withdrawn. And I need to recuse myself from items 27 and 28, so I'm going to turn it over to Don to take us for the next couple.
Item number 27, final review for Wiley Farms subdivision, section two, containing 53 lots on 426.2 acres located off of Del Rio Pike in the 10th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Del Rio Pike, shown in red at the bottom of the screen, and the development totals 426.2 acres in size. You can see the phase outlined in blue. It contains 53 lots, shown in the pink, and contains approximately 310.27 acres of open space, which is all the white within the blue. Roads within the development are private, and you can see those in the yellow. This final plat is consistent with the concept plan and the preliminary plat. Water will be provided by the City of Franklin and wastewater handled via non-traditional wastewater treatment disposal system, and staff recommends approval with standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Abigail Overstreet with Wilson Associates, representing the applicant for Wiley Farms, section two. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have anything to add to staff's report?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant or staff at this time?
Motion to approve, first staff. Thanks.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 28, site plan review for Wiley Farms subdivision, common area, containing zero buildable lots on 24 acres located off of Del Rio Pike in the 10th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Del Rio Pike, which is shown in red at the bottom of the screen. It is approximately 24 acres in size and is classified as a country club. The facilities and open space include a wellness center, restaurant, swimming pool, poolhouse, badminton, tennis and pickleball courts, croquet and bocce courts, lake and a boathouse. And staff recommends approval with standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. The applicant come up, please.
Hello, Peter Romano with Collective Civil Engineering, representing the applicant for the common area for site plan approval. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Do you have anything to add to the staff's report?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant or the staff at this time?
Motion to approve, first staff. Second?
Motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crowhan. Moving on to public hearing section, item 29 was deferred and on the consent agenda, so we will move on to item 30, concept plan review revised for the villages at Triune West subdivision, containing 98 single-family lots and 214 townhome lots on 157.79 acres located off of Horton Highway and Murphysboro Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an aerial view of the property. It'll zoom in and you'll see the Triune West Village here on the screen. The original concept approved in March was for 103 single-family dwellings and 130 townhome lots. In May, the Board of Zoning Appeals granted a special use approval for 83 townhomes in the TCA 2 district. You see that on the screen in the brown color. The 83 townhome units shown there were not on the approved concept plan but were incorporated into the approved traffic impact analysis reviewed and approved by the county's traffic consultant. Applicant is requesting revised concept plan approval in order to incorporate these 83 townhome units approved by the BZA into the overall development. The revisions do reduce the number of single-family lots from 103 to 98. Those additional units come up in the townhomes. This is located off of Murphysboro Road and Horton Highway. You can see the two roadways in red on the screen. Property total is 156.26 acres. You see it there in the blue. The 98-lot conservation subdivision is in the green. And then the 214-townhome development, you'll see it in the purple and the brown. The density is 1.98 dwelling units per acre. Applicant is proposing a combination of public and private roadways for the development. On the screen, you'll see the brown, those are the public, and what looks to be red and then changes in the green and the purple, those are the private roadway sections. Water is provided by Nolanville College Grove Utility District. Wastewater is served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, and the natural resources on the property include moderate and very steep slopes, area of woodlands and wetlands. All natural resource protection standards have been met. As you may remember from the original approval, concept plan does depict several 12-foot-wide multimodal greenway trails. They're shown here on the screen for you. They'll stub into the existing adjoining properties for future extensions. They're shown there in the little firecrackers. And these greenways should be constructed prior to the submittal, the final plat in which it is located. Now, in your packet, we included all of the traffic improvements that will need to be made with this residential phase, phase one of the Triune West. This will carry over to this revision that was outlined on attachment 30-4 in your packet. I won't go over all of these. Staff does recommend approval of the revised concept plan with all of the conditions outlined in the staff report, including the completion of all roadway improvements and satisfying all conditions with the wastewater site plan. So all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, but we did not have anybody sign up for this one, so we will close the public hearing phase of this and move forward with any comments or questions from...
There was one who signed up.
Oh, is there? Sorry.
It's for the second, it's for the next one.
Okay, good, thank you. Good deal. So any questions that we have for staff on this?
Questions, if you have one.
Yes, sir.
You said now this is 156.26 acres? Is that correct?
Give me just one second, let me find my report. I'm sorry, so 157.79, I failed to correct it on the PowerPoint.
Thank you. And the other question I had was on this, it's showing stub going to the property on the side there.
To the south?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What, didn't we have a question on whether that was a private road in there that they would be stubbing into?
So on the screen, it's in the brown, so that will be a public road that they're stubbing into?
Public road, okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
I'll make one comment just for engineering to follow up on the Horton Highway Turn Lane is in good shape. The Murphysboro Road Turn Lane, I'm sure you or T dot one will point it out that it needs a proper taper and bay taper back in, so just make sure that gets in there. Technicalities, but it will be plenty well-reviewed.
I'm glad we have a chair that knows that.
There we go. Anybody else have any other comments, any questions for the applicant? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, first staff.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item 31, amendment to articles 11 and 23 of the zoning ordinance regarding private airports, landing strips and heliports. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just briefly, staff proposed an amendment to the zoning ordinance to clarify how the setbacks from the ends and the sides of runways for private use are measured to the property line. So after we published the notice, staff received many comments regarding this amendment, and after careful review, we feel it's best to take a step back and revisit the issue. So tonight, we're asking that you defer this until the October meeting. And additionally, the amendment will not appear on the county commission September agenda. Now, since the public hearing has already been advertised, we have to hold it.
Good deal. So at this time, we do have one person who's signed up, and you'll have three minutes to discuss, and so we'll go with that. Just state your name and your address. It's Jason Goddard.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Jason Goddard. I'm at 5720 Garrison Road in Williamson County. I'm here representing my client, Charles Cruz. Where the applicant's referenced in the text amendment, staff write-up. Mr. Cruz is home recovering from a surgery header this week and sends his regrets for not being able to attend. I just wanted to state that this amendment was not in, the amendment to the ordinance was not intended to expand any of the already permitted uses within the counties that pertains to the private landing strips, but is only intended to clarify how the specific setbacks that are required are applied. Private landing strips are currently permitted within the special use permit, with a special use permit within the RP 5, RD 5 agricultural and village categories. The ordinance requires a thousand-foot setback off either end of the landing strip and 200 feet off of either side unless you're adjacent to a residentially zoned property, at which time that setback increases to 1,000 feet. This amendment clarifies that the 1,000-foot setback will be measured from a residential structure or residential use rather than a residential base zoning. We feel this is important because single-family residential structures are permitted in every base zoning in the county, including the 840 corridor. So this amendment will ensure that all residential structures, even those that are constructed in non-residential zoning areas, will be provided with that 1,000-foot setback requirement. And it'll also clarify when the 200-foot setback versus the 1,000-foot setback that's outlined in the ordinance will apply. So as a potential applicant, we support and agree with staff's proposed revision to the amendment and would respectfully request your consideration and support in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, staff has requested deferral on this item, so do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Concept plans, item 32, concept plan review for Farron, AKA 1360 Coleman Road subdivision, containing eight lots on 62.98 acres located off Coleman Road in the 11th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an aerial photographer, or zoom in of the property. You'll see 1360 Coleman Road, that went really quick. The property is located off of Coleman Road. You can see Coleman Road there in the red. The property total 62.98 acres. It's outlined in the green. This is an eight-lot traditional subdivision. You can see the individual lots there in blue. The density is .13 units per acre. The lots are between 5 and 8.54 acres in size. 9.48 acres of open space, you'll see that there in the green. Traffic impact analysis was not required with this development, but the applicant has agreed to Coleman Road improvements, which includes a right, westbound right turn D cell lane and an eastbound turn lane that will be located on Coleman Road. The roads will be public. And the property to the north, where's my road? My road didn't pop up. Property to the north, also known as the Harland property, is under consideration to be annexed by the City of Franklin. The extension of the roadway beyond these eight lots to the Harland property will require approval by the planning, or by the highway commission. When the highway commission granted approval, it was only for these eight lots. There's our roadway there. And so at the very end of the roadway, at the top of the screen, that's the Harland property. Water will be provided by HB and TS Utility District. Sewer service is provided by the City of Franklin. Whoops. Located on the site are moderate and very steep slopes. There are pockets of woodlands and there are wetlands. You can see the wetlands outlined in the purple. 15% of the site will remain in open space and 75% of the existing tree canopy will be retained. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report, including condition for the road improvements to Coleman Road and that any extension of the roadway to the adjoining property to the north will require highway commission approval.
Thank you. Any other questions on item 32?
Motion to approve, first staff.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to preliminary plats, item 33, preliminary plat review for Byrne subdivision, phase one, containing 41 lots on 39.11 acres, located off Patton Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The development is located off Patton Road and accessed from Horton Highway to the east. This phase totals 39.11 acres, and there you see the outline of the phase in the blue. Consists of 41 lots. There's the 41 lots shown in the pink. There's approximately 20 acres of open space. The open space is in the white and the gray within the blue boundary. Roads will be private. There's a road network. Water will be provided by the Nolanville College Utility District. Lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system in the brown in the upper left. And this, the preliminary plat is consistent with the concept planned, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item 33?
Motion to approve, first staff.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item 34, preliminary plat review for tributary subdivision, phase one, containing 39 lots on 12.66 acres located off Cox Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The development is located off Cox Road and also at the end of Ginger Road, there you see the roads in the red. This phase totals 89.63 acres. There's the boundary in the blue. Consists of 39 lots. There are the lots in the pink. It's approximately 63 acres of open space within the boundary, and the open space is in the gray and in the white. Roads will be public. There's the internal road network. Water will be provided by the Millcrofton Utility District. Lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. There you see them, the wastewater treatment system in the brown. And the preliminary plat is consistent with the concept plan, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item 34? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, first staff.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second on item 34. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Item 35 was deferred through consent agenda, so moving on to item 36, preliminary plat review for Smithsons Valley, large lot easement subdivision containing four lots on 34.57 acres located off Patensville Arnold Road in the 2nd voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off Patensville Arnold Road, as you can see in red on the right side of the screen. Development totals 34.57 acres. Consists of four lots, as you can see showing up in the violet color. The lots will be accessed by an access easement, shown in green. The resource protection standards have been met. Building envelopes will be separated by 200 feet. Lots one to two will meet fire access requirements, and lots three and four will have fire sprinkler systems installed in all habitable structures. Water will be provided by Millcrofton Utility District. Wastewater will be handled via individual onsite septic systems, and staff recommends approval with standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any further questions on item 36? I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Final plats, final, item 37, final plat review for the property of Cassandra Fish, large lot easement subdivision, containing one lot on 34.72 acres located off of Oscar Green Road in the 1st voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Oscar Green Road, shown in red on the bottom left of the screen, and the development totals 34.72 acres in size, containing one lot, shown in the pink. The property's access, or access is provided by an existing easement, shown in green. The property will meet fire access requirements. Water is provided by an individual onsite well, and wastewater is handled via individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved. This plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval, standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this?
Motion to approve, first staff.
All those... All those, we have a proper motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 38, final plat review for Susan Hollow, large lot easement subdivision containing four lots on 31.13 acres located off Puget Road in the 1st voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Puget Road, shown in red on the left side of the screen. And the development totals 31.13 acres in size, containing four lots shown in the pink. Properties accessed via a shared access easement. Water is provided by individual onsite wells. Lots one to two will meet fire access requirements, while lots three through four will have fire sprinkler systems installed in all habitable structures. Waste water is handled via individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Supply and Disposal Management has approved. This plat is consistent with the preliminary plat and staff recommends approval with standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on item 38? Do I have a motion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Other business? Ready to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.